Okay. What do you think, Hannah? We have four.
We do have four. It's a forum.
Awesome. Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Excellent. Okay. Well, call the meeting to order. This is the Mineral Planet Commission regular meeting for Monday, August 26, 2024. It is 7:01 PM. And I'll ask Hannah to take role.
Alex just moved in.
Okay.
Commissioners present in establishing a forum, Commissioners Blair, Bull, Dawkins, and Lo.
Thanks, Hannah. All right. Item number three, public comments. It's time for people to speak to the planet mission in person. We have no one present, so we'll move on to minutes for our most recent medium meeting from August 12, 2024.
We did receive that written comment.
What's that?
We did receive the written comment. I left it on the table.
Excellent. Okay. So we did get an emailed comment from Dexter Taylor. It's been provided to commissioners. Excellent. Group of minutes from August 12.
I move to approve the minutes from the August 12 meeting.
Good.
All second.
Excellent. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Word zero, Hannah. All right, moving on, we have a couple items in new business. We'll start with item 7.1 Monroe 2044 future land use map. Kate's going to present to us. We have Alex. To Alex.
We do have Alex. We're gonna tag team a little bit. And so while the presentation is coming up, I just want to walk you through what's in your packets. I gave this presentation to council last Tuesday, so I can share their comments. But again, we are not starting from scratch. There are lots of layers of policy that we need to follow. In the packet includes the population, housing, and employment allocations that we are trying to accommodate by 2044. Those numbers actually came from the Office of Financial Management through the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050, then through Snohomish County, and then we are divvied up an allocation. The city of Monroe is in the town and cities geography from PSRC's Vision 2050. And then in your packet also has a brief description of the items I will be walking through on the major changes that are being proposed. And then I also had a bunch of attachments for you, the proposed action versus the current future land use map. There have been a lot of questions about buildable lands, so I did want to provide you just some of the background information. It is actually a very in-depth analysis of the city's land uses. They even account for a market assessment. So you have this big number, you take out anything you can't develop, and then they have an, I think it's like a 5% market assessment that things aren't going to develop within that time, so they even take that out. So I wanted to provide that background information and also cover it in the presentation tonight. There's also the 20, or excuse me, the spring 2023, all the outreach, because that was a big input into how we came up with the proposals I'm gonna walk through this evening and the land use scenarios that were presented to you and the city council the end of last year. Okay, let's go. So again, our starting point is actually the last comprehensive plan. The big changes in 2015 were the creation of the tourist commercial zone around the fairground. That was really the most significant change. There were some small changes along Main Street with the mixed-use designation. That really is the biggest change that you saw in 2015. Next slide. And so I've already gone through this, but again, it's the Growth Management Act, the Washington Office of Financial Management that gives us our population estimates each year, and the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2050. The big difference that happened in 2050 is that they created this new geography called High Capacity Communities. It's where the light rail stations are and Bus Rapid Transit, and they are assuming 40% of all future growth goes around those particular, the communities that have those stations in them. Monroe, it's like 2%, or Snohomish County, that's all we're supposed to assume for growth. So it's really minimal compared to the big picture of the Puget Sound region. Again, the Buildable Lands report tells us what potential we have to work with. The 2021 report got us through 2035. There was only one category where we did not have capacity from 20 through 2035, and that was not housing. It was employment, which is also the challenge that we've had going forward. Then the initial targets, or excuse me, allocations, the housing came later. We had the population and jobs pretty quickly after 20, I was in 2022, and then all of our outreach. Which one? Yeah. So I'm not gonna bore you with the buildable lands, but it just really tried to explain that this is a pretty in-depth process. They have demographers, they have GIS, they asked us for our input, they use critical areas, they ask for our zoning, and not only do they ask for our zoning, but they're like, okay, well, this is what we assumed, or you could have the potential for, what are you actually seeing? And so they're making those adjustments as well. Next page. And then, so the slide on the left shows you where we have potential for additional housing, and the graph on the right is additional population. And then again, as a refresher, we have to accommodate about, it's actually like 20, was it 2,500 thereabouts, people and housing by 2044. It's a smaller number for jobs. Next. Again, all of the engagement. So how this worked is we said, we have these big numbers we have to accommodate. If you got to wave your magic wand, where would you like us to accommodate people? Where would you like us to make changes in what our current land use is today? And so that resulted in the open house pop-ups, the online survey, and that information also helped provide guidance for the land use scenarios. Next slide. So we also took feedback. For example, the Trombley Hill Park was originally included in the buildable lands information. That is not going to be houses. They dedicated that land. So we made additional refineries before it was put into the model that MIG has. Next slide. And so I'm gonna pass this over to Alex to kind of explain our starting point after we refine the buildable lands materials.
That's great. Thanks, Kate. And it's good to see everybody again, at least virtually this tonight. So I'll just remind you all from a scenario planning standpoint, how we got from what Kate had just mentioned or discussed for the buildable lands inventory, how that was refined, both through what the buildable lands inventory had started, through permitting, permitted actions, and then actually from the community input. And so ultimately, you know, this is a, this is a tool that we use to test a series of what-ifs from various development standpoints or, you know, assumptions. But just to give you a sense of kind of how this works, to remind you, I think you've seen these slides before early on, maybe a year and a half ago when we first started this, but we take the buildable lands inventory, which is essentially that table or that, that graph, or that figure on the left side of your screen, and input that into a model that is essentially used to be able to attest different types of land uses, whether that's mixed use or residential, commercial, industrial. And we developed a series of scenarios based on community input to see how growth could potentially occur, both to meet the targets that Snohomish County requires of us to meet, but also to begin to meet what the community is saying in terms of different development types. And so we use this, you know, for several months through a community process, through, through an analysis process to the end of 2023, back in November, where we made a decision on what that proposed action would look like. But just to give you some background about, this was some of that work that we did initially in the tool that was used. Next slide, please. So getting into more specific examples, so you know, this, the urban, urban footprint, which is the scenario planning tool we, we use, essentially allows us to replicate what's in the buildable lands inventory in terms of existing parcels that they say are either vacant, redevelopable, partially developed. And then we can apply those development types on that land. And so that red circle should actually be over those blue parcels in the middle there. But those blue parcels were ones that were identified within the buildable lands inventory. And then so as we're developing the scenarios, we look at what are the potential types of growth that could occur there. And so the yellow is typical. That's, you know, generally detached residential neighborhood. And so when we're applying these types of different kind of potential building types or development types, we look at adjacencies, what that is, and then what the community is telling us for, for that future land use. So we're not painting the entire city. The areas that we're painting are what is being told that's buildable, partially developable, or excuse me, redevelopable or partially developed, to be able to really focus where growth could occur. So it's not a blanket strategy across the entire city, knowing that change is going to occur in pretty specific locations where there's vacant or redevelopable land. So it's fairly strategic in how we've applied it. Next slide. And so there are a variety of inputs. You can make this as detailed or as, as, you know, kind of general as you want. We actually went pretty detailed in this. So when we looked at potential development types, and this is an example where we were developing a mixed-use category, similar to what you have in your development code, we actually got down into some details about what are the potential percentages for retail or office? How much residential should we assume within this? Actually getting into landscaping and parking? What are specific parking requirements or average floors that we would want to look at? So this helps us, you know, kind of focus really how much development could occur, but also the different types of development that could be applied on those parcels. And it's important that, I think, with this step, aligning that with your future zoning, that, you know, it does create, really, I think, the most realistic idea of what development and the capacity for development to occur on those parcels that were selected. Next slide. And so with that, Kate, did you want to step through this? Do you want me to step through buildable or the future land use map?
Go ahead. You're on a roll.
All right. So this map shows, you know, in general, what the draft future land use map looks like. And so it's, and it's overlaid by the buildable lands inventory that, that was created by Snohomish County, and then was amended or updated by the team to remove things like Kate mentioned, where we know that there's undevelopable lands like parks, whereas there are already permitted projects, so that we're not double counting. And we know that based on, from when the buildable lands inventory was completed to about a year ago, when we set the map, not about that, eight months ago when we set the map, you have between 900 and 1,000 units that have actually are in the permitting process. So we've already removed that land capacity from this model, so that we're not double counting that. And there's a couple of reasons why I'm saying this. One is that you have, you are already meeting your targets without those, without that property, without those areas developed, because we know that they're permitted, whether or not they're constructed, you know, that's still up in the air until it's on the ground. But two, we want it to ensure that you're meeting your land use targets. So kind of regardless of what happens with those in-process or permitted projects, you're meeting your targets. And that does include removal of things like right-of-way, critical areas, steep slopes, other sensitive locations that are actually not really developable. When you look at a map, hey, it looks great, but it's all wetlands. So those have actually already been removed, a capacity. So what you're seeing underneath in those, those parcels, those are the areas that have been identified as potentially buildable or redevelopable. The areas in the, kind of the dotted lines, those are locations that the community told us we should look at more closely. And these were run through Planning Commission and City Council a few times in advance before we developed this map. We actually had a couple of different concepts that we were looking at. One was more dis- dispersed, and one was more focused. We went to a blended approach. But those colors are areas that we could see or are suggesting some changes. One is that you have a lot of very light yellow on the map, which is R4, that's your low-density residential designation. And conversations with the city actually pushing that up to a medium density, which goes to R7. That does not affect developed parcels, per se, but it does affect and allow for more mix of uses, primarily residential within those parcels that are vacant. So you get a little bit more capacity in there. Some of the other areas are essentially on the west side, up near Roosevelt Road and down near the high school, is rather than focusing on those, is either just detached residential or commercial, thinking about them a little bit more dynamically. And these are both shown as neighborhood commercial, but we're actually thinking that this might be more of a mixed-use designation. So it doesn't really change the kind of quality or the assumptions for the growth. It's more about which existing future land use class do we have that generally meets what we're looking for and provides those uses. So, so from a focus standpoint, the changes are rather minor. It is, you know, kind of looking at potentially increased residential densities in neighborhoods where there's developable land. It's looking at some focused locations on the west side at the corners where the community's told us they want more services. And then in the central part of, of the city, you know, where you have large format retail, you know, there's other types of commercial uses, is actually kind of creating more of a mixed-use district. And so that is something that would be a change potentially is to be able to make sure that we get some residential in there, some mixed use, and some greater walkability between downtown and, and areas like North Kelsey and some of the commercial spots. So overall, again, not huge changes, but definitely ones that, you know, are more focused in their specific locations. Next slide. And so just kind of stepping through that, this gets into some of the more general changes. One of the conversations, we had this with the advisory committee, as well as city council, and so I kind of stepped through a lot of these already, really that 154th Avenue connection. There was not a lot of support to maintain that as a mixed-use corridor. However, there was interest to essentially create some mixed-use nodes near the park on 154th and at 179th and 154th. So trying to think about those as more nodal areas where there might be some more, might be some small-scale mixed use or commercial. And I think the conversation really around the development around the park was to make it more active, have a few more services, but knowing that that's an established detached residential neighborhood and that, you know, really from a redevelopment standpoint, it's going to be hard to, you know, do anything more broad than something that's, you know, kind of a small catalyst project. Some of the other areas downtown, downtown came up in pretty much every conversation as kind of the center of the city, but you know, people want to see more businesses, they want to see more residential. And so it's really kind of, you know, adding to the mix of downtown, but also making the connections between downtown and your commercial area on the other side of Highway 2. So thinking about that, both from a forum standpoint and land use standpoint, which is more downtown or mixed use, but also thinking about your connections from a transportation standpoint. And that's part of what the transportation element is doing, is starting to think about, how do you bike? How do you take the, how do you, how do you walk? How do you do these things? That's not necessarily in a car. I think the only other piece I haven't spoken to, there was other information, kind of like along the park at 154th is along Chain Lake Road. There was desire from the community to provide additional services within neighborhoods. There are areas in here that potentially could do that. So we're recommending a small mixed-use center along Chain Lake Road. There's some undeveloped property there. There's also a lot of critical areas and slopes in that, look, in that general location. So we found that this was an area that could support potentially some small-scale commercial or small-scale mixed use. But again, overall, minor changes to still meet your targets, but definitely ones that, you know, we feel meet some of the community intent, as well as some of the discussions we've had with you and, and city council over the past several months. Kate, I think that's, did I cover everything? Did I miss anything?
No, that's it. I do want to, just some of the questions and feedback we got from council last week. I did want to provide a little bit more detail. So that area, the Roosevelt Road at the northwest corner of our city, that's in the city limits, it's not the UGA. And the idea for that was the mixed use. So what it would be in our current zoning code would be the mixed-use general, and it allows for a grocery store. It also allows for 12 to 25 units per acre for attached housing, as opposed to what's proposed or thought of for the Chain Lake Road. That idea that we heard was we wanted like a local coffee shop. When I said 7-Eleven, they're like, no, 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 that's not what we had envisioned. And so looking at the mixed-use neighborhood that we already have would be a better designation. It would still allow potentially, what is that, 8 to 16 dwelling units per acre. It would be, you could, you could potentially have that in addition to the commercial, but it's, it doesn't allow grocery stores. So it's a different type of mixed use. And so we're really trying to hear, follow what the, the community was telling us. Some of the other things, I think the, the biggest challenge is crafting the zoning code, especially for Main Street, trying to figure out how do you hit that sweet spot to protect those historic buildings that were really important to the community, but encourage residential development to occur around it. I think some of the other things that came up, the council, there were a couple council members who are really concerned about 154th Street, just not appropriate for even the nodes around the, the park. And Councilmember Beaumont explained what happened at the CAC meeting, and she said, this is the conversation, and that's why those items were included. Um, do you remember anything else from the meeting?
You got it.
Okay, yeah. So with that, I just wanted to answer questions, explain next steps, because it's not the last time we're gonna do this. Complan gets updated every 10 years. One of the new changes, though, there's a couple of things that are going on Monroe. So if we didn't hit the sweet spot that you anticipated, the state is requiring us to do an update in five years to show our work that we are, it's, it's really focused on residential, but we have to provide a report to the Department of Commerce. This is what our targets were for allocations. This is how we're getting there. We're making progress or not. If we are not doing, we are not making progress, we're gonna have to open up a plan again. The next other opportunity, which is very unique to Monroe, is if the PUD actually goes through with the project at the airport. If the airport goes away, we are talking about height, height limitations. So that could really change the character of the community, and that is a huge what-if. But that also has the potential of another opportunity for opening up this conversation. Questions, comments, concerns?
I have a question.
Yeah?
Um, I know I asked once about, you know, talking about businesses or whatever, like throughout Creator Joes, and you were saying how we don't fit their amount of, of population. So for talking about some of the bringing certain things in, does that come into play also on bringing in other businesses and population, or is that not only like a big chain?
It will have an impact. I wish I had a, one of my mentors was always telling me, for a small grocery store, you need X population within 10-mile radius or something like that. So typically, what the factors are, it's population density and income. And so one thing that we could do is a market assessment. And in the economic chapter, one of the things that, it wasn't the existing conditions, it was, I think it was called the scenarios. They did a little bit of that analysis in two parts of the community. So to figure out if the Chain Lake Road or the Roosevelt, that might require some specialized, specialized analysis. Yeah.
Girl. Me, or me, sorry.
The, so the dotted purple line that, I believe, one of them's Main Street, and then like on the very bottom, the snaking kind of one down there, is that the, like where we are in the Sky River Parkway area? Sky River Parkway, Village Way?
So the little square.
Uh-huh.
Yeah, right there.
So then, because I was just trying to, one of the new mixed-use nodes that is talked about is a few parcels between Sky River Parkway, Village Park, Park Street, and is that it there?
It is, and that has a story. That's the food bank. And when the, the city did the update last time, I honestly believe it was an omission. For the, the food bank is technically in the residential zone. The food bank is not a permitted use. So the options were to change the code or change the zoning. I honestly believe that the land use designation change was more appropriate. So that's why we put that one on the map.
So the square is the food bank, and then the rest of it is, it's like, that's all just Main Street there, or the straight, more straighter one's Main Street, isn't it?
It's kind of the whole squiggly, because it's got different sections along the street.
So did we, does this map incorporate the few parcels between Sky River Parkway and Village Way? That's only for the food bank?
That's correct.
So not this street where like the library is, where there's already like the, the one small bar that's down here? More of that in this area is not gonna be showing up with this map?
And it's already got the zoning that we're proposing to intensify along Main Street. So it's, it's already zoned to encourage what you're seeing happening now.
Yeah.
And I think there were not, if I remember correctly, there aren't any vacant, partially vacant or redevelopable parcels on Village Way. So that's why you're not seeing the intensity.
Yeah, that sounds right.
And is this right now the current draft version? This is the right one?
This is it.
So it still has the purple lines on 154?
It does, but I believe those are coming off.
Yeah.
We just left the conversation tonight.
Yeah.
Sorry, one last thing. Something that I heard people talk about that we never saw on the map, because it seems like the map got maybe made before some of these comments, but I had heard people at the different events talking about Freyland's Boulevard having more mixed use with commercial on bottom, which it already has, and more high-density housing on top, because it's, you know, one of those pole areas of like the, the park have a lot of high use. And so I know we can't do that right now, because we've already done the environmental impact and stuff, but I think I'm just mentioning it so that if we do open this back up in four years or 10 years, that, that gets looked at.
Okay.
So Brandy, tell me where the input was, the, where were they talking? North of 154th or south of 1? Where did?
Um, all right, so there's the-
It's, it's where that commercial node is already on Freyland.
Okay.
Yeah.
The Passanos and-
Yeah. Those are the last open house, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or the workshop with the maps and the pieces and the games.
Yeah.
They came up a lot there, but also at the middle school, open house before too. Yeah.
So turn the picture that, so you, those two little strips, they weren't residential on top of that?
Uh, that, yeah, I guess they didn't like hone in exactly where they were talking about, but since that's like a thoroughfare, it made as much sense as having Main Street be mixed use would, like having more housing that's high density, where you could even possibly have an apartment complex that was down in that area. There's like what, the big box store or something down there, or like the church areas on that edge?
Definitely, they don't understand how limited our industrial areas are, and then we started phrasing on industrial use as hell. So like when the big box goes out, that space is going to industrial.
Correct.
Well, it's, it's zoned industrial now. So whenever, you know, a, a business goes out that was in the industrial area, that it's not industrial, it's commercial, it can't go back to commercial, correct?
Yeah. So some of the comments, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brandy, but some of the conversation that came up that I remember at the open house, at least at my table, there were, there was a desire stated that for the vacant buildings in the industrial park, they wanted to see it transition to residential. That's not something that the city would particularly support, because industrial land is so hard to cite, and they have such specific needs. Residential can go pretty much anywhere, but if you do try to add it in that- But if you do try to um, add it in that pocket. Um, I think that would work.
Right, they didn't, they don't understand what that, that there's limitations, but they didn't have to because they were just supposed to give their dream ideas. And so that mixture of like, here's what I'd like to see, but the only place that's really possible is like on those outskirts of the. Right on Fryland Boulevard possibly.
Yeah, and assuming the airport.
Yeah, but again, when you're citing residential next to industrial. You end up having residential people complain about the industrial uses, which creates a whole host of other problems. It's like folks moving next to farms, they go, oh, those cows stink. You know what I mean? That's why you have to be. So you have to be very cautious about center gaining your valuable industrial area of those residential.
You could, or you could have people who end up walking to work. Yeah, like they do with uh, the village at, in Totem Lake, right? They've got the big tower right next to the hospital and a lot of their stuff. So um, yeah, I'm, I think it's worth talking about these kind of weird crazy ideas. Because um, that's probably what people, if that's what they're wanting, they're gonna find it somewhere. So we might as well try to incorporate a little bit of those kind of ideas, I guess.
That, that same step, I was just gonna say, um, sorry to cut you off, Alex. The area that's um, our urban growth area, the southwest U G A that's in the U G A. Um, there were some, the hopes that you could take that, the area that's not, not industrial. But the area that's along five twenty-two, make that really kind of hardcore commercial, like the Totem Lake example. And then fronting along Main Street and then the road that goes up to access that, make that um, attached housing. So it's, it's more of a mix. And then um, people that were coming or passing through the community, there might be some faster meal options. Off the freeway, but then there's a, a greater mix of higher intensity commercial with residential. So, and that's, that's already designated for that, so.
And some of that property is for sale.
Yeah, in the city. Did you have something to add, Alex?
No, you're, you're great. Um, Brandy, I would say these, these are all great points. And I think that's one of the challenges sometimes is how, you know, balancing. In, input about desires where things move versus, you know, the context of what, what can occur. And I think we've tried to blend to the greatest degree practical, what people are saying in terms of walkability, services nearby, other areas. Um, Frylands is challenging because, you know, one, the industrial use is what you discussed. But it's also a lot of critical areas um, as well. And so like particularly, you know, on the park and other areas, that's either heavily developed already with existing residential. Or it's very challenged from a development standpoint. And so those are the types of areas we actually tried to avoid to, you know, maintain and protect natural resources and other, other locations. So there's, we certainly weren't able to get everything on a map that folks said. But I think what we tried to do is really um, get the intent of where people were going and what they were looking for. In terms of services and jobs nearby with residential and easily accessible by bike pad transit. And you know, of course, cars as well too. But yeah, it's a, it's a balance. There, there's, there's no doubt about it.
Alex, I have a, a question about your buildable land software.
Sure.
Is it, is it nuanced enough to, let's say um, a property was built as a house? Or a neighborhood was built as houses, but it's now multifamily? Is it nuanced enough to take into consideration age of the original buildings? The value of uh, land now and that kind of thing to figure out? You know, potentially when the redevelopment might happen, might occur?
Yeah, it's more of a, it, it's, it's more of a land based model. And so a, as opposed to a more of an econometric model where you'd be looking at those other inputs from. You know, when is something gonna flip? Um, we did do some analysis looking at, for example, you know, where, where would middle housing actually potentially fit with? You know, the existing development pattern or what parcels could we assume potentially could have an accessory dwelling unit? And so that's, the model is very good at doing um, kind of a form assessment and a developability assessment. It doesn't really hit the kind of one thing, it's, when's it gonna flip? Um, it doesn't, it doesn't hit that market component uh, that, the, that we, that we. We get warranty like pro forma or something like that, if you were gonna do that.
That reminded me, they, I found the accessory dwelling unit analysis that you were asking for. It was five hundred units by twenty forty-four. And I know Alex was a little bit concerned that that might have been an overestimation. Um, Amy is working on, we've got a couple other code amendments that will be coming complimentary to the comp plan. One is accessory dwelling units, the other is the middle housing. Uh, so Amy is also trying to do a little bit of analysis, trying to determine what is a realistic um. Number of accessory dwelling units we could see. There's a really big focus on detached, but any house at the split level or um, has a tuck under. Those make really great opportunity for um, attached ADUs. So we'll see what happens. Um, it's a really interesting market. And with the removal of the ownership, the owner occupancy requirement, that was a huge deterrent. And then the size parameters, um, with the state taking that off. I, I'm expecting we're gonna see a lot more. I know um, Tony Bulk had made comments for quite a while, oh, we've never seen these, they don't come through. But with the changes um, making it easier, I suspect. Well, I know we have at least three people waiting for these changes to, to um, apply.
Yeah, I'm seeing it too in the, in the sale market where.
Yeah.
Just like you're talking, it's a house that's being redeveloped, daylight basement is the ADU. Then the upper floor is the main house. And then there's a detached uh, dwelling unit. So there's three separate dwelling units and they get condominiumized.
Yep.
Um, and unnecessarily, or one, the main unit isn't necessarily when occupied. It can be three separate. Groups of people that were separate groups.
Yeah.
Separately for sale as well, separately for sale, yeah. Actually, they can buy, you know, any of the three units.
Definitely world for. Old school planner.
Yeah. Well, and that's, you know, I think that's the, a lot of this is new, you know, the new world, like from a, a cost standpoint. You know, having, you know, more opportunity within detached residential zones, you'll start to see more of that. Yeah, there was a, an article actually forwarded to um, Amy today that in Seattle and to your, to your point, Commissioner. Um, they're actually building more of that than just traditional detached, single family homes. One unit on one lot, you're seeing more of those multi-unit. You know, there still can be detached or attached, but you're seeing more of those on parcels than just a, you know, kind of typical, single family home. So there, there is, there is change for sure. I think the Seattle market is much different than the Monroe market. Um, so you know, when that happens and how it happens, you know, probably not as fast, but certainly it's coming.
Kelsey, did you have any questions? Nope, okay.
So we're encouraged that we're gonna, we'll easily be able to meet our dwelling units.
Yes.
Population goals and, and job, yes.
Yeah, a little, a little bit nervous about the jobs, but um, that's a little bit, a little bit harder for us to accommodate the housing and population. I think we're not gonna have a problem with that.
Yeah, it just seems like the, the number of uh, new folks we have to accommodate is very modest.
Yes.
I work in Linwood and they're opening the. On Friday, and the number of people, you know, the Linwood planning department had to accommodate the number of people. The influx is there, it's just, it's huge, the number of uh, people that are starting toward library.
There's a really good article in the Seattle Times about the four new stations that are opening. And all of the projected housing units that are gonna go. And you look at those numbers and what they were allocated, they're not out of line. I mean, you think that they're crazy numbers, but it's like, but all of the allocation, like what we got tubes for them. But the areas around the new transit stations are, they're, they're pretty high. I mean, that's the expectation.
Any closing comments? We'll move along. So this is um, this is the stop launch of the future land use map. Mine is will be taken off the one fifty-fourth. I do wanna look at the um, the park designation before moving to mixed use. Because the comments that I heard during the CAC meeting and that were reiterated last week, council was really um. I didn't hear there was a desire to see the area change, but to activate. So that would be um, uh, food vendor, mobile food vendors and, and stuff like that. We might be able to do that with the current designation. So um, I'll be corresponding with Alex, um, if we can accommodate that, that mixed use might actually come off. I still think it needs to stay at um, the intersection of one fifty-ninth and one seventy, or one fifty-fourth and one seventy-ninth. There is opportunity there and that could serve um, both the corridor off of Blueberry Lane as well as one fifty-fourth. And it's underneath five twenty-two, so it does make a little bit more sense. And there's a couple of decent sized parcels under there. Um, let's see here, next steps? Okay, go ahead.
I said one last comment, we were just talking about Linwood in Seattle. And, and then, you know, that these are kind of um, not too much of a change, but change in the right direction. And I think that does make me like more comfortable with everything. Because yeah, just over the last week or so, I've had to make a lot of trips to some of the areas that you're talking about. And we're not that, and people are coming out here because we're not that. And so we don't want to, to do what they're doing all the way. Because then there's no place that's different. Um, and that's what people like to come out here to have that, that choice of, you know, larger lots, larger homes, single family. And so um, but adding some of that more urban feel with some mixed use in our corridor of US two. And these other areas, I think we're, I think we're doing the right thing.
But it still doesn't help me get a quarter pub on one fifty-fourth. I said teriyaki shop.
I do feel strongly that neighborhood nodes are something that people do want. And maybe, you know, we've had vocal people on both sides, but um, it doesn't represent everyone since not everybody shows up to these things. And that is something in the future that, you see that in all the active neighborhoods. There's something there that draws people, that is the gathering place, that is a place to go. Whether it be the library or a pub or, you know, a small gas station, coffee shop. But we, we can get it eventually, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's one of like that hub or if there's other hubs is, you know, there's the land use and activation consideration. But it's also um, an incubator opportunity for small business and others. And that's like, you know, those are great places to start a cart or to do, you know, other pop-ups, whether it's there in other locations. So, you know, I think it will, be talking about this, we get to the comprehensive plan later. Is that land use doesn't operate in isolation, you know, it, it works with economic development and transportation, you know, critical, climate, critical areas. So when we think about land use, we're trying to incorporate um, kind of the ideas behind that, uh, those other elements. To make sure that, you know, they, they build upon one, one another as opposed to conflict or isolate other elements. So um, great points and Jay, we'll get you a teriyaki shop at someplace, uh, we'll do our best.
Um, so the next steps on this, um, this is being filed into the comp plan. I have all the chapters except for transportation, which is coming soon.
Uh, right now, actually, so.
Oh, he's sending it to me now. So Hannah is gonna help me with a share file that will send you the link so you can download all the documents. And uh, next Monday is a holiday, but after that, we'll try to get through two or three per meeting. And then again, your public hearing is coming on September thirtieth. So um, we'll also tie in the environmental analysis that's occurred. And um, I have you tentatively forwarding this to the council in the middle of October. They're scheduled to hold a hearing at their first meeting in November and then take final action. Their last regular meeting of the year. Um, more work will continue in twenty-five with the code amendments. The big piece of it is really close.
Is it?
No, no, okay, nevermind. Well, that's it for this item tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, I don't know if Alex was gonna get off, but I have one comment. I, I really appreciated the way that me um, like, or, I don't know. It got all of us together, communicated everything to us, and I think you guys did a really professional job. And it really felt like you dug into our community and got to know us and our areas. And um, I trusted that you guys were doing the right thing, so thank you for your work.
Well, I, thank you, I appreciate that. And I, I have to say, it's um, Monroe's been a great city to work with. I work with a lot of different communities and I'll say, I've, I've really enjoyed the process. And I have to say too, particularly for Kate, because you've, you've been a stalwart in getting through all this. Uh, you also have great students. Um, we've been, we were in the high schools twice and they gave us the best kind of detailed information. Um, that you could expect. And uh, it was really kind of awesome just to be in there with them and talk about them living in Monroe in twenty years and what that looks like. So I hope we've been able to honor that so far and we'll see when you get into the comp plan to make sure we've done that. But it's been a, it's been a great project and really appreciate just, you know, everybody's input and, and planning commissions, council and the advisory group as well too. Because that's a, that's a special effort to have to step through all of these on top of everything else, so, so thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
Yeah.
I tend to agree that reading through some of the outreach stuff, I, I would definitely agree, reading stuff on the high, some high school distance was great. I was, their insight was great, I thought. And I think it's just really important for us to hear from the younger generation. Some of these thoughts and, and how much they really are attuned to what's happening in the city they live in. And um, you know, they're the future, so it's, it's great to really, they, they've done a really great job, I think.
It, um, I know Alex is working on the um, the summary of the, the spring outreach from this year. And um, it, the, the one thing that makes me feel good and Lance feel good is the same thing that we were hearing last year. We are still hearing this year, so there wasn't a change. Um, and so you'll get the comments, because they, uh, at the high school, we did the uh, board game with them. And so all of those comments will be provided soon as well.
That was one of my comments, question, when this year's stuff was.
Coming soon. What's that?
I am, I am the holdup, it's in my inbox, I just need to.
And um, my only other comment I had with the outreach is, and I was kind of going and going through it. Um, since I wasn't on the commission last year and stuff, so like in the beginning of reading it, so on some of it's missing the year.
Oh, okay.
The date, and if you wanna know what pages, I do, I run them down. Because in the beginning, a lot of these averages that were last year are this year too. So, and I first was kind of reading through it, I'm like, wait a second, this isn't really going to slide as some of this stuff. And so I finally started realizing, okay, this is twenty-three, not twenty-four.
We need to label better.
So um. So what, what I noticed anyways is pages twenty-five, pages fifty and pages one hundred and five are missing the year.
Okay.
So, yeah, so I guess something like we wasn't here last year. And I kind of know like the game had different pieces and from this year's game, yeah, so I was like, okay.
A little different, definitely. We didn't know, we didn't have, we were still building the land scenarios and this year we gave you the whole package. So yeah, that's easy base.
Yep.
And, and before we leave absolutely, thank you for the summary. Um, your little paragraphs and. Background that, so we could walk through each one of the changes and put the two maps side by side and go, yep, yep. These are the updates and these are the changes that are decided on, very, very helpful.
Good. Thanks, Alex.
Good seeing you all.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks very much, Kate.
Yeah.
So let's move on to seven point two. End of.
Is that my cue? It is.
Second, uh, second meeting of the month. We get our monthly report from the community, community development department.
Sure.
Lots of fun stuff to talk about, Hannah.
Yeah, we got some fun stuff. All right. So you've got the July twenty twenty four Community Development Department Report. As always, we'll start at the top and work our way down. So in the month of July, we had three pre-application meetings, just like we did in June. Uh, one was for a new building on Thai Street that's over in the industrial area. That's building an equipment and truck maintenance shop with office space. One was for a proposed rodeo over on State Route two. This is just on the edge of town in the East Monroe area. Um, as you're heading towards um, Old Barn Sultan. And then the New Hope Fellowship Preschool at one zero one two West Main Street. Um, this church is proposing to host Monroe Christian Schools preschool within a building on the church property. So this is just the church right across the street from Monroe Christian School. Our project highlight for the month, um, we have been busy helping out. A lot of new businesses coming into town. So figured we'd put a spotlight on some of that work. Um, some of these new businesses include the new Starbucks. Um, they're on State Route two. Uh, Global Spice Grocery. Uh, this is also on State Route two. It's over by Dollar Tree. But I drove over there the other day and they have a sign up now that says Haveli Grocery. So um, they must have changed their name from the time they applied. Um, the Wendy's Project on State Route two. Uh, Blazing Korean Barbecue at one nine one nine one State Route two. And they also have a sign up now, which I was excited to see. And Sushi Spot at one oh two East Main Street. Uh, the department has worked with these businesses through pre-application meetings, building permits of middles. Building and planning inspections and land use permits of middles. So there you can see the blazing Korean barbecue sign and then the approved for planned drawings for sushi spot. Okay, and then our current projects in review. Um, the biggest updates you will notice on this page are the additions of development agreements. Um, so we have the Monroe thirty annexation um, development agreement. Which we have talked about a couple of times uh, in the annexation section of the department report. And the PUD development agreement at um, First Airfield. Yeah, and I guess for the development agreements, I'll just add in, that's not something that will come to the planning commission. But we want to keep you posted on what's going on. So people are asking, hey, I heard this crazy thing. Uh, you will be able to answer their questions.
And right now, that's like that, that's like. Not binding, because I mean, PD doesn't even know that yet. But it's like they're, they're saying if we were to do this, this is how we would do it. And. And then city agrees. That if they did it like that, it would be like.
It's a contract and and the two that we have are very different. The PUD is your traditional um, development agreement is very specific on what the future will look like. They're holding the regulations. At a place in time. Now, the pre-annexation is actually really targeting two things that. Um, the city said. We have, these things are imperative to us. We do not want this to go forward unless you can guarantee we get this, the park area that is in our pros plan. And that this project includes middle housing. And so it's a different, there are different types of contracts, but at the end of the day, they are a contract between the applicant and the city. Yep.
But the other thing you're saying is that this potential PUD um. Development could completely change the use of the airfield.
If if they, if they purchase the property, then then and they move forward as they indicated their airfield would go on that. They would be building buildings and a variety of other things on that location.
And they would leave their.
They they would be um, leaving that location and consolidating their services up um, if they would have an administrative building up out on that location so that. They would um, ultimately close the downtown.
I think it was like. I want to say they were talking about closing three.
Yeah.
Three administrative offices to consolidate.
Into one. But that does free up some area in downtown area for.
Yeah, the redevelopment, absolutely.
The next use or whatever.
Yeah. It's a building and a yard.
I mean, there is positives to that, but also, I mean, I just kept seeing in the, in the goals for GMA that we're supposed to protect airports. So it's like. It seems like kind of. It seems kind of strange how it didn't get protected somehow before, I guess. And with what is already on there. It's confusing to me how it's uh, being able to change use like that so big with it's not, doesn't fit with the current zoning of the um.
Terrace.
Yeah. And it doesn't protect the airport. So I don't understand how it's working.
Yeah. So I'm happy to give a little bit of background since we're in discussion anyway. Um, the airport compatibility regulations were actually adopted and that was to prevent adjacent properties. From encouraging it to shut. I don't think anybody anticipated somebody such as the PD purchasing the property. It is privately owned. Um, when I called the state, this was Lance. When I called the state and said, we have this situation. What is the process? I've never been through an airport potentially closing. And they said, well, you should purchase it. And like the city of Monroe is not in a position to purchase an airport. So. Um, it's private property. The zoning actually does allow the government uses. That's how it was adopted. So technically their proposal is consistent. Um, with the zoning code, which seems a little bit in conflict with the compliance designation. But that's how the regulations got adopted. Legal.
So nobody Beverly like FAA steps in and says this has to remain.
No.
Because it's private.
Yeah.
Okay.
It seems like it's one of the goals of the GMA that it, this is an example of it failing. So like, maybe it just as a reminder that. We are supposed to balance out all the different things and try to look, look for any of those. Those incompatibilities between our zoning and the goals and all that stuff for this next few years of continued process. That's what I'm gonna try to use as a lesson.
Yeah, absolutely.
While we have the conversation, I had a question on one of these like plan reviews. The Mills Smith Townhomes on South Park Street. Um, we talked about that a little bit, maybe months ago. Um, that's right close to the food bank, right?
Correct.
And and the park access. And I'd asked about if their building plan included like. Any walkability for people to get down to the park since we're trying to continue to keep that like open and not closed off. It would be an opportunity to ensure that. I know they're not going to want other people walking through their residence, but at least their own residents can have easy access to get to the park access.
I will um, get back to you. I do remember you asking that question. Um, they they have approval, they have preliminary approval. So let me, I'll be able to get back to you.
Which I know includes sidewalks, sort of the all side um. Pieces are a little bit more difficult. I mean, they're required by city code when they develop that to put. Adjacent infrastructure. In this case, it would be, it would be sidewalks um, to public streets. Not sure how that connects down to the park though.
Look in the backside, if you went down park, so.
Well, because right, the, sorry, the food bank access is like how a lot of people get there. Right? And if somehow they got shut off.
Right.
You would then have really limited access for a lot of people on that side of the town. So. Um, I realize this one's not that, but that same idea, I guess. I just wanted to watch out for that.
Yeah. Sorry, now I'm looking at the site. Moving on, um, we had. Six detached dwelling unit building permits issued in July. That was half as many as June. And the building department conducted a hundred and ninety six inspections. So that is up. Um, quite a bit from June. Uh, you can tell that our new inspector is fully onboarded. He's very busy. He has been very busy. We have Friday inspections again, if you know anybody who's working on a project.
Yep.
That brings us down here. Friday inspections has resumed since our inspector has been brought up to speed. Um, we are in contract negotiations for our new permit system. And hope to have a final proposal to present to the mayor and council by mid-September. Uh, in July, we had two open code enforcement cases and seventeen cases resolved. Kevin, our code enforcement technician, has been working with PD to um, work on tracking graffiti around town. And um, doing that through online primary reporting. And the primary election is over and a vast majority of the. Um, unpermitted temporary signage around that has already been removed by folks that installed it. It's been doing a lot of good work around that.
When they start putting out signs for the next election.
Um, I mean, we've already started getting um, temporary sign applications for those. So. They can start putting them out now.
I have a curiosity question on something on here, like graffiti. So I would expect most graffiti is done by. Young people, teenagers or something. Um. Do, do you know if that is the case? And if uh, are they referred to some kind of um. You know, the community resource officer. Um, I know they deal with code enforcement stuff, but. Could they also, or do they also have a piece that's like. Crime prevention for youth?
So. Kevin actually gave us our department kind of an overview recently. And I know, gosh. I'm gonna get confused on the holiday. It was either Christmas break or spring break last year.
It was spring break.
And they saw the spike when the kids left school. Um, but um. I don't know about the prevention. I know the police department is trying to work on a um. A program, maybe it's trying to help get going where they clean it up. But what Kevin is really trying to do is there's. Uh, it's not just our city, but there's like a national program that's trying to track. The taggers, because if they catch them, they can identify all of the pieces that they put up. And then um, the other piece that he was explaining is that there are some gangs.
Yeah.
And um, tracking them as well is really important um, on a national level. And so. That's why they're really putting an emphasis between the police department and our department and using this other um, database. So I don't, I don't know if I answered your question, but that's what I'm aware of.
Because Brandy, Brandy's um. She's hinting that it's youth rather than some urban places, it's artists that are taggers. And they're not necessarily young. There's a individual in downtown Seattle recently got shot. He was like, kind of. The release. He was a tagger and there's a, there's a very competitive nature from the artists that are taggers. And then he was got shot by another tagger. Yeah, but so here it's likely youth.
Yeah.
And gangs. Um, but with AI, they should be able to. Take a photo, upload it to a portal and it should be able to basically identify the tagger or the group of taggers, right?
That, that was the hope.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. I do know, we, we do have a youth group or young.
There is a youth council.
Based on what happened last year, there, you could see the spike when the school without.
And your, your point is they should be encouraged to do other activities.
Yeah, this kind of seems like goes along with what our city's trying to do, right? It's like, it seems like we're trying to push people on the right path and like. Not be super punitive, but like give them another option of. For good behavior, like we try to do like with the, the code enforcement when somebody can't get the wrong road, you know, we're trying to find a way to get them to have a service that can help them instead of finding them and that kind of stuff. And I just was wondering if it, if we know yet if it's youth. So it makes sense.
Yeah, I think that's where some of the language of these crimes would be prosecuted to the fullest extent of the law was more of some of the um. Gang.
Yeah.
Exorcism. Great. Thank you. Okay. These are new business license. Licenses that were issued in July. Anyone has any questions about those? No? Right along. I don't think there was any updates to the comprehensive plan or the annexation sections. Those are both just. Chugging along. So on the annexation, I do have a verbal update for you. Um, Connor, there was a. A difference of opinion on the legal description. This is on Tester Road and. We learned that Tester Road is actually in the state right of way for five twenty two. And so um, we. Our Public Works Department came up with a solution with the county. Uh, and so they are crafting a legal description that takes in Tester Road, but not all the way to. The state route. And then during that process, we learned that the state is actually in the process of giving back Tester Road to the county. So for the city piece, it will not go to the county, it will come straight to the city. And so there's been a lot of coordination on that. Um, for Monroe thirty tomorrow night, there is a public hearing before the city council. If you want to partake, listen. Um. The applicants or the applicant representing the property proponent. They have collected a hundred percent of signatures for the property owners interested in coming in. And all of those property owners are voluntarily agreed to the development agreement. It has to be a vol, it's a voluntary contract. Which is a really um, unique situation. The. Project proponent only owns or has control of two of the parcels up there. So it's just, it's been really interesting to listen to. Uh, depending on what the council does tomorrow night, the next step, assuming they want to move forward, is it goes to the Snohomish County. Boundary Review Board. And that has its own process. There is the potential. The county can take jurisdiction, but I think um, this morning I learned our Public Works Department is willing to take on. Maintenance of one road that was a concern. So um, anyway, we're moving forward on that. Thank you. Any more questions on the report?
Thanks, Hannah. We move on to discussion by commissioners and staff. Good. You'll see. Mr. Dawkins, are you available? For discussion items?
Sure, I'm having a internet problem. Okay.
Okay, we'll move on. We'll come back to you, Kelsey. Go, Carla.
Um, I'm just, oh, there she is.
Sorry, I, the button, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. I'm not used to doing it on the phone, but um, I, after all that, don't have anything for discussion. Good to see you guys. Great presentation.
Thanks for attending. Appreciate it. Carla.
Um, well, it's good to be back and uh, you know, thanks for the presentation and from seeing you again. That's great. Um. I know we have the Blueberry Park that we're cutting on Wednesday. So I went to the pickleball courts we've been cutting. And uh, it was, it was interesting hearing the mayor tell how that got funded and and brought about. So it was kind of interesting. Something to learn and and that was fun. So yeah, fun. I'm going to that one too and. I'm trying to do. Um, on this September thirtieth. Public hearing, will that be here or that somewhere?
Oh, that's really cool. Uh, it. It should be here. I would assume it's gonna be here. We, we um, are still lacking.
Or options or.
I would assume it's gonna be here. If it changes, we'll let you know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then um, on that, like if someone out for people to know, or having it or.
So public, the public hearing notices have not gone out yet. Um, I actually talked to utilities this morning to see if I could include it in the utility billing. Um, that's not an option unfortunately, so uh, we're of course gonna use our, all of our social. It will be on the Facebook. I s, I've gotta check the budget because I would like to do a postcard, especially the property owners that are gonna see a change. Um, so uh, still, still to come, I'm, I'm gonna do that. I think I may still have um, enough money in the peach jar, which is through the school district. Um, I'd have to get approval from them because it's not a community meeting, it's really a notice of hearing. I will be getting creative though.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, like you have utility billing, email addresses, right?
Not necessarily.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure, um.
Got it.
I hadn't thought about that. I'll have to ask, I'll have to ask them if we could do that.
Because somebody would have to, uh, would have to sign up for electronic billing. Otherwise, not everybody is going to, is gonna have that, so we probably wouldn't have email addresses for everybody.
Got it. I just thought everybody.
Yeah.
Email billing and.
No.
Oh.
Be surprised, okay. I've got it.
That's what happened.
Uh, I like how, I mean, that, like, like right now when you're taking action about, oh yeah, okay. That, cause you're doing that every time now with all the hearings and everything, like making that extra stuff and I think that, that's really great. And I liked how Alex was saying that Monroe seems like really good with all the city staff and all the community engagement and stuff. I think that says something to somebody who's seen a lot of different cities and that we do have a special community here of people. Um, so I, when we were talking last meeting about the September meetings and having a lot of them, it's like, oh my gosh, September is here.
Yeah.
When you mentioned that after the holidays, I mean, I'm excited to do the, the weekly meetings, but it just seemed like it came up really fast all of a sudden. So, and you're used to that, that's why you always tell us in advance, like, it's gonna be like that, um. Yeah, that, can you tell me, sorry, when, uh, what time is the Blueberry Park ribbon cutting again?
Five.
Okay, thanks.
September sixth.
Just something.
Email.
Okay.
Oh, Hannah's on it, it's just on the website.
Trying to figure out her.
Five, she ends, there we go.
Yeah. Twenty-five bucks.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Um, I do enjoy the conversation when everybody gets a chance to voice their opinion. Appreciate having Alex from MIG here. He's always very helpful. And thank you again, staff, for getting a large volume of material to us in thirty-two weeks. So we're gonna get another big dump of stuff on the ten, the ten, eight, nine.
Um, you actually, so I'll get to highlights for the ninth, but just um, if Alex, he said he was sending the transportation element. So if I have all of the files, I actually will be working with Hannah tomorrow to get you a link to the share file so you can start reviewing now. And I decided, um, I decided to keep them as Word documents because I think it's easier to use the edit mode.
Yes.
And I can track easier.
With the work.
Yep, yep. So um, sorry, Kelsey. She likes the UFC. Yeah, um.
I've never seen the other option, so whatever is easiest for you, I would, I wanna do that.
Well, actually, we can probably do both. I mean, share file, that's kind of why it's created, right? Yeah, um, I talked to Ben Swanson today. Um, the Trails Master Plan will be put in there. It has not, it does not incorporate all of your comments yet, but he doesn't wanna stop this process from moving along. So if there's something else that you see, just make a note. Um, he did want me to let you know though, the, the comments have not been uh, incorporated yet. So that's the only one that I'm aware of for that. Um, and the transportation element chapter is the only one that I have not seen yet, so it looks funky. You've already seen the, you've seen the full plan, the full meal deal, this is supposed to be a summary, so I'm pretty optimistic it should be in good shape.
We've got a good opportunity to make comments and talk it through. So we have, what date is that? It's the ninth?
So the date, September?
Twenty-third and the thirtieth. Or connected.
There's one more in there. Ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third and.
We're doing the sixteenth as well.
Yeah.
Being on sixteen.
So it's pretty.
Yes, every Monday in September, just to make sure you can get through the whole document.
Besides the seventh.
Yes, it's the seventh, it's a holiday, so.
So the sixteenth will also be here.
Yes, like no. Yep.
Okay, that's great.
I, I suspect that all the meetings will be, we're kind of in here. We don't really have a lot, a lot of choices to do it.
Kelsey.
Um, so for the expectations of that, are we getting an email saying we're gonna be going over these couple chapters and then reviewing them on that Monday? So you need, or is it kind of a, what are they set up like?
So the, the email that you'll get is a link to a share file that will have all of the documents. I am going to figure out how to break them out by each meeting, so you're not completely overwhelmed. So um, there, there's the introduction, the vision, and then there are nine um, substantive chapters and an implementation, and implementation is still coming. Uh, the other piece is I need to work with our uh, environmental firm to get you what we've received for the environmental impact statement. Um, it sounds like there's a little bit of delay, but you also need that information. It's a piece of the puzzle. And then the other thing that I'll have um, when it's ready is have Hannah also put the um, summary of the spring outreach. But I'm gonna, so you'll have access to everything, but I will try to create a schedule. These are the ones I'm hoping to cut through this week. These are the ones I'm trying to get through this week, because it's a lot. I mean, they're, they're pretty easy reads now and you've already seen everything once except for transportation. Um, but I just wanna make sure I'm giving you all enough time to, to review and comment and provide feedback, especially if there's something we missed or you have a redirect. So.
And maybe that's for sessions, uh, everybody has been like ready, reading the same stuff. Cool, great.
Yeah.
Lance, we have, of course, thanks for being here today, Lance.
Yeah, it's good, it's good to see everybody. The um, well, one of the up, just quick update is um, was about the PV uh, development agreement, which is still moving forward. And the other thing that is going on with the city is we're, starting in twenty twenty-three, we went to a two-year budget and so twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, so we're just finishing our first, the end of our first two-year budget and starting on our next one. And for you, if you read in the news, um, sales taxes are down for all cities. So there's a little bit of belt tightening, I would say, expected for this budget. But that, that, things are gonna start going to council probably again in September. But the city also has a um, a tax levy, I probably will butcher the words, but Proposition One, um, which is, there's information on the city's website, could forward it to the planning commission if you wanted. I, I'm not gonna try to explain it. It, it has, it's um, it's called Parks and Public Safety Levy. Um, so it uh, is specifically for those, for those two departments and services. And there's a lot of information on there, so um, that will be going on the ballot in November. So we'll see how that progresses. But if you're interested in budget, sort of keep your eye open. It'll start in September in the council.
So you're saying across the board, revenue from sales tax.
It's sales, sales tax has been down statewide and you know, I, probably a lot of different factors. Um, inflation is kind of hitting, hitting that, so um, really budgets across the state are, are, are gonna be a little tighter than they had been over the last few years.
That's a perfect segue because your September ninth meeting is gonna be really busy. Um, I may just have the intro and the vision for you because Deborah Knight, our city administrator, will be coming to you about the levy lid. Um, we can only give you the information. You make your decisions based on that, but it's the, the fact piece. Um, uh, Jacob Roberts, our public works director, will also be coming back to try to answer more of the transportation modeling questions. So those will be the first part of the meeting. Uh, then Leanne um, will be coming with code cleanup phase one finally. It's not the fun stuff, but it, uh, we're really trying to get that movie. We. But with that, I did wanna let you know um, a couple of things that Hannah touched on and one item you've already seen. Um, part of the code cleanup, Leanne had found that um, the daycares somehow got completely uh, excluded from the mixed use zone, so we are plugging that into code cleanup phase one. So that will be one of the many items that you'll be seeing. And then I also um, wanted to give you a heads up, the downtown commercial will be coming back to you yet again. Um, there's been more conversation about the membership organizations. Um, and then we've had an inquiry since we're already having, since it's already open and it's an opportunity to potentially deal with another issue on small event banquet type um, facilities. So uh, Amy will be the lead on, she's the lead on that, so she'll be coming back to you. Um, that could also hit on the ninth. Um, that's on a pretty tight timeline, just to try to finish wrapping that one up. And then finally, um, Anita is currently scheduled to also come back to you for an update on the middle housing. That project has also um, warped a little bit in scope. We are very hopeful to get rid of the infill standards and take the good pieces of that and actually put it back into code where it's appropriate because the middle housing allows you to have a density bonus and it does give you some flexibility in the lots. And so that's really what the infill was supposed to do. Um, but it still references Title eighteen, which no longer exists. And so we're um, after a couple of planning questions we've had in the last couple of weeks, we're thinking that might be a better way to really make it more concise and um, address all the items that the infill standards were supposed to. So a busy September night.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, just to make sure there's anything else. And I realized I still owe you an answer on um, you would ask me something else. Oh, the money for helping rehab. I completely spaced that the last time you asked that, so I just made myself another note.
Like for the um.
The houses.
Yeah, yeah. I did send um, a few references to Lance, but.
Oh, okay.
Did you even see that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, because I know um, Deborah had mentioned it a while ago. I just haven't followed up the first stuff. That's all I got.
Thanks, Kate.
Yep.
Anna.
I don't have anything. I'm just excited to go to the fair.
Yeah, it'll stop, right?
Best time of the year. I love the fair.
There's a concert. Really? Somebody turning. Josh Turner.
Martina Wirth, right?
That's tomorrow. Council.
Oh, that's right. Sure you don't want me to get off the.
You should go, you should go to the fair concert.
That's it.
Thank you. And Hannah, you have to remind us, there's uh, another event on seven.
September seventh, yeah, it's uh, Belonging at Sky River Park, but also that day is Swift's Night Out at Wagner Performing Arts Center. It's really cool. It's put on by the um, Polchuk Audubon Society. And it's all about the Vos Swifts that nest in the chimney.
But at different times, so we can attend the longing and the evening.
Swift's Night Out starts at four thirty.
On step.
Burgered here.
Thank you very much.
Um, I'll make a motion to end the meeting.
Motion to adjourn, by a second. Carla seconds, so in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, Kelsey. Okay, thank you all.
Awesome, thank you guys.